Okay, ladies and gentlemen, may I have your attention? This evening, we have an annual town meeting, and then, right after that, we have an annual town meeting of the Board of Trustees. This meeting happens just once a year, and you're lucky enough to be here for this evening's meeting. So, I would like to call the town meeting of the Town of the City of Peoria is now called to order. Could you please rise for a moment of silent prayer or silent reflection and the pledge of allegiance?
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, this first meeting is the annual town meeting, and if you reside in the Peoria Township, this is a meeting of the electors, and so, everyone in the room, if you live in the township, you are eligible to vote. So, if you're a registered voter, then, so, the first order of business would be the election of a moderator. So, could I have nominations for the position of moderator?
The head of chair will nominate Sid Ruckregal as moderator.
Thank you, may I have a second? Thank you. Is there any other nominations from the floor? Are there any other nominations from the floor? Seeing none, the nominations are closed. All those in favor of electing Sid Ruckregal as moderator, raise your hand. Thank you. All opposed, raise your hand. Thank you. Sid Ruckregal has been elected moderator by a majority vote. Sid Ruckregal, could you please rise to be sworn? Do you swear to perform the position of moderator of the annual town meeting faithfully and impartially as required by law? Thank you, please take the chair.
Thank you, Town Clerk. Could you read item number four for us?
Yes, it is the Statement of Financial Affairs of the Town of the City of Peoria, and we have a request to approve. And this financial statement is a page-long, and there are copies on the railing if anyone is interested in reading this over. So, we could have a motion.
Do I have somebody to make that motion? All right, all right, by Beth Jensen, seconded by Dennis Seer. Please cast your ballots. That passes unanimously. Item number four, or I'm sorry, item number five?
There is a request for approval of the minutes of the annual town meeting held on April 10, 2018.
All right, motion by Charles Grab, seconded by Zach Euler. Please cast your ballots. Passes unanimously. All right, item number six?
Is the citizen's opportunity to address the electors.
All right, I'd ask any citizens that would like to address the electors to please come to the middle podium. Any citizens that would like to address the electors tonight? Third call for any citizens who would like to address the electors? All right, there being none, I would need to request a motion to adjourn. By Tim Rigenbach, seconded, and please cast your ballots. Passes unanimously, thank you. All right, next up tonight, we have the annual meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Township of Peoria. Can we get a roll call?
Yes, one moment. Chairman Artis is absent, trustee Akerson, trustee Seer, trustee Grab, trustee Jensen, trustee Montalongo, trustee Moore, trustee Euler, trustee Rigenbach, and trustee and chairman pro tem tonight, Ruckregal, and trustee Turner.
President.
You have a quorum present, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Would the Town Clerk please read item number one?
Item number one is a public hearing regarding the 2019 to 2020 budget for the Town of the City of Peoria.
Mr. Chairman, I move to open the public hearing.
Thank you, do I have a second? By Councilman Seer, please cast your ballots. All right, passes unanimously, thank you. Anybody who would like to speak at the public hearing? Anybody who would like to speak to the public hearing tonight for the Township of Peoria? Third call for anybody who would like to come forward and speak tonight for the public hearing? There being none?
Mr. Chairman, I move to close the public hearing.
Thank you, do I have a second? From Councilman Seer, or trustee Seer, please cast your ballots. All right, passes unanimously, thank you. Item two?
Is the annual report draft for April 1, 2018 through March 31, 2019, with a request to receive and file.
Do I have a motion for?
Mr. Chairman, move for approval.
Thank you, in a second, by trustee Jensen.
We're approving the receiving and filing of this.
Okay. Any other discussion on item number two? There being none, please cast your votes. Passes unanimously, thank you. And second, by trustee Jensen, please, any discussion on item number three? There being none, please cast your votes. Passes unanimously, thank you. Item number four?
Is a resolution for the Town of the City of Peoria authorizing township officials to continue a loss control policy with TORMA and to enter into a contract of insurance with a request to approve.
Mr. Chairman, move to approve as outlined.
Thank you, and seconded by trustee Jensen. Any discussion on item number four? There being none, please cast your votes. Passes unanimously, thank you. Item number five?
Is a resolution authorizing the Town of the City of Peoria to enter into a payroll services agreement with ADP LLC with a request to approve.
Mr. Chairman, move for approval.
All right, do I have a second? Trustee Jensen, any discussion on item number five? There being none, please cast your votes. Passes unanimously, thank you. Item number six?
Is a resolution authorizing the Town of the City of Peoria to enter into an agreement with the Heartland Clinic with a request to approve and to receive and file the 2018 statistical report.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve and file that report.
Okay, do I have a second? Trustee Jensen, and any discussion on item number six? There being none, please cast your votes. Passes unanimously, thank you. Item number seven?
A resolution authorizing the Town of the City of Peoria to make a donation to the Center for Prevention of Abuse with a request to approve and to receive and file the 2018 report.
Mr. Chairman, move for approval.
Seconded by trustee Jensen, any discussion on item number seven? There being none, please cast your votes. Passes unanimously, thank you. Item number eight?
Is the annual town budget and appropriation ordinance for 2019 to 2020 with a request to adopt.
Mr. Chairman, unless there are any questions, I'd move to approve.
All right, are there any questions? Not seeing any, we've got the motion to approve, it's seconded by trustee Seer, please cast your votes. Passes unanimously, thank you. Item number nine?
Is a resolution consenting to the employment of Mesher Law Offices as Town Attorneys with a request to approve.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve.
All right, and seconded by trustee Jensen, any discussion on item number ten?
Is a resolution designating individuals to prepare the budget and appropriation ordinance for fiscal year 2020 to 2021 with a request to approve.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve as outlined.
Seconded by trustee Jensen, any discussion on item number ten? There being none, please cast your votes. Passes unanimously, thank you. Item number eleven?
Is a resolution designating the time, place, and date of the 2020 annual town meeting with a request to approve.
Mr. Chairman, this is required by law, I move to approve that resolution designating the place, time, and date for the 2020 annual town meeting.
Thank you, seconded by trustee Jensen, any discussion? There being none, please pass your votes. Passes unanimously, thank you. Madam Clerk, any new business? Madam Clerk, then we would be at citizens' opportunity to address the town board.
Yes, we'd be at.
Would anybody like to address the town board tonight? Second call for anybody who would like to address the board tonight? Call. There being none, I need a motion to adjourn, by trustee Grab, seconded by trustee Euler. Please cast your votes. Trustee Euler, I need, yep, there we go. That passes unanimously, thank you. I'd like to welcome everybody into the chambers tonight, and all of our listening audience on WCBU or those viewing us on Comcast Channel 22. And a special welcome to Marina, Zoe, and Sam, who are some sophomores from IVC who, as part of their civic class, are going to be observing tonight, and little did you know that you would actually get three meetings in one. Not often do you have a town, township, and a city council meeting all in one, so, welcome. And, Madam Clerk, we would be at roll call.
Mayor Artis, councilmember Akerson, councilmember Seer, councilmember Grab, councilmember Jensen, councilmember Montalongo, councilmember Moore, councilmember Euler, councilmember Rigenbach...
Here.
...and trustee Rigenbach, and trustee and chairman pro tem tonight, Ruckregal, and trustee Turner.
President.
You have a quorum present, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Would the Town Clerk please read item number one?
Item number one is a public hearing regarding the 2019 to 2020 budget for the Town of the City of Peoria.
Mr. Chairman, I move to open the public hearing.
Thank you, do I have a second? By Councilman Seer, please cast your ballots. All right, passes unanimously, thank you. Next up tonight, we have the annual meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Township of Peoria. Can we get a roll call?
Yes, one moment. Chairman Artis is absent, trustee Akerson, trustee Seer, trustee Grab, trustee Jensen, trustee Montalongo, trustee Moore, trustee Euler, trustee Rigenbach...
Here.
...and trustee Turner. You have a quorum present, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Would the Town Clerk please read item number one?
Item number one is a public hearing regarding the 2019 to 2020 budget for the Town of the
Chairman Protem Ruckregel.
Here.
And Councilmember Turner. You have a quorum present, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. If everyone would join me in rising for a couple of minutes of silent reflection and then pledge of allegiance.
You can tell it's spring when a lot of things start to bloom and with that actually come a lot of very good proclamations. And I think today is, is a true reflection of that. We are, will be honoring over the next couple of proclamations some wonderful work that is happening in our community and also some recognitions that I think really do say a lot about our future. So first up, if I could have the Manuel Rams come up and, and join me. Every meeting should start off like this. Y'all come up this way a little bit, yeah. As a city and as a community, I think we owe a lot to our Manuel Rams to be able to really represent us as well as they have. And Principal, do I see you back there? Come on up. Come here. Well, I, I know, but you know what? Hopefully you will join me with a couple of words of reflection on this as well, right? So, tonight, whereas the Manuel Academy Boys Basketball Team advanced deep into the postseason by winning the East Peoria Regional Title, by securing a thrilling Peoria Sectional Title, and by prevailing to win the DeKalb Super Sectional Title, and whereas the Manuel Rams thus earned a berth to the IHSA Class 3A State Tournament Finals, playing in front of the hometown crowd at Carver Arena and earning a fourth-place trophy. And whereas that trophy brought the Manuel's program total state boys' basketball trophies to 16, the most in the entire state of Illinois. And whereas the Rams boasted a first-team All-State Player named by Illinois Basketball Coach Association in Orlando, Pee Wee Brown, in addition to a roster filled with talented, high-character, and hard-working players. And whereas the Manuel Rams represented South Peoria, the entire city of Peoria, and the central Illinois community with pride, embarking on a thrilling postseason run that captured the attention of fans across the region. And whereas Coach Willie Coleman, his staff, and the Rams players competed with tenacity, passion, and integrity, living up to the standard of excellence forged by past Manuel basketball teams. Now therefore I, Jim Artis, Mayor of the City of Peoria, Illinois, do hereby recognize the great work and the historic achievements of the 2018-2019 Manuel Academy Rams Boys Basketball Team in Peoria, Illinois, dated this ninth day of April, 2019. And, and I'm also going to have Councilmember Moore come up here after you speak because I know she's got some very special words. And I thought maybe even a challenge in there, something too.
First of all, I'd like to thank you guys for acknowledging the team and Manuel High School. And I also want to thank, I always got to thank, first of all, Dr. Karat, her administrative team. They've been great throughout the whole, uh, uh, season at every game. And she don't know how much it feels when I see her smiling face in the stands. I'm like, gosh, she's here. We got to perform. And I really appreciate that. And, uh, I'll also thank our principal, Ms. Z. She's always been there. She's been there for the kids, supportive. When we need team dinners, she fixes dinners for us. And we really appreciate that, Ms. Z. Really do. But, uh, yeah, give her a hand. But talk a little bit about the team and the coaches. We started out very slow, seven and seven. The city doubted at us. Manuel's not going to be good this year. But I always tell the guys, we got to just keep working, man, because I believe in you. And once I start believing in you, you guys got to believe in yourselves. And they, they bought into the system, kept coming to practice, working hard. We start winning. We start winning. We start winning. And I said, I told you. We can do it. We got to stick with the system and to believe. And they really did believe. They stuck together as a team, quit being selfish, shared the ball, and we ended up downstate. And I know they didn't think we was going to do it, but I always thought it. Because Manuel basketball, you, you look to go downstate. You don't look, regional is supposed to be guaranteed, sectional is guaranteed. When I played, that was guaranteed. So I got to get these guys on that track. That's guaranteed, man. We're supposed to win those ballgames. That's Manuel tradition. And, uh, these guys did a great job, man. And I appreciate you guys. Good job, man. Give yourself a hand. But this is not possible without great assistant coaches. And I got some great ones. I'm going to get back to the players, but I want to introduce my assistant coaches right now. First, I got Assistant Marvin Jordan. Also a Manuel graduate, got a second in the state when he played, went on to play college basketball, earned a degree. That's the most important thing, having these guys around positive people, getting an education. Because basketball is a tool to get education. And, uh, and Marvin is an example of that. Also got Stan Hanging right here. Stan's been around the program for years, 12 years plus. And Stan does a lot of stuff behind the scenes nobody sees. A lot of stuff, man. I can go on and on and on. And I greatly appreciate that, Stan. That's day in and day out you do, man. Appreciate it, Stan. And then I got Paul Burst, also played for Manuel, on them good teams in the 90s. Great motivator, know what Manuel basketball about. He's been great with the kids, day in and day out, stay on them, day in and day out, whether it's on the court, off the court, he's on them. And I appreciate that, Paul. Good job, man. And last, I got Paris Gully, also another Manuel player. We try to keep family, as you know this. Paris went on, played college basketball, got his degree. And that's a positive role model to the kids. And I'm glad to have Paris come back and give us a help with the basketball team. So thanks, Paris. And now I want to introduce, introduce the team. First, I got a freshman, Cameron Alcauzi. Where you at? Cam is a freshman, uh, and it's tough to dress, freshman at Manuel as a, tough to dress varsity at Manuel as a freshman. So that says a lot about Cam. He's going to be learning and he's hopefully the future in Manuel. Next sophomore, we got Marshawn Taliber. Marshawn is, Marshawn is Marshawn, one of a kind, but I love the depth out of him. That's my boy. And next, we got Nick Petty, another sophomore. Nick Petty, also a sophomore, and he's going to be a great addition to Manuel program. Next sophomore I got. Imarion Bird. Step up, Imarion. Imarion was one of the starters as a sophomore, and that's tough. That's tough. And but, it was rough, rough road for him. I always tell him, man, you got to quit being a baby. Oh, he's, you're not a sophomore. You're playing varsity basketball. Quit being a baby. But he constantly continued, continued. He did better during, throughout the season. So good job, Imarion. And next, we got the juniors, Joshua Ivory. Big Josh. Josh is another treat. This whole junior class is a treat. But they came a long way from freshmen to junior. Junior could never, never imagine the stuff we had to go through as a freshman. But they continue to learn and, uh, you guys are maturing. So that's Josh Ivory. Another senior, a junior. Another junior. That's my boy. Maurice Bird. Oh, he's... Maurice Bird is something else. He, he had to learn to keep his mouth shut. I said, I don't know who you, you must talk about it at home a lot, man, because I can't say nothing to you. You got something to say. So, but he's, he's learning and he's maturing. So that's Maurice Bird, another junior. And then I got Adress Bailey. Step up, Adress. Another junior. Adress been good this year, always on practice on time. And he did a great job this year, Adress. That's all the juniors? And of course, we got, uh, Pee Wee Brown and Storm Hanging is also juniors. And they're playing baseball right now, so they can make it. And last but not least, we got our seniors, Briante Boyce. Briante been around the program for four years, good kid, never having problems in the classroom, never had problems on the court. And he's going to be, he's going to be someone in the future. Trust me, you'll see him somewhere. He's going to be a, he's going to be somebody. All right, good job, Briante. We got DeMarco Greer, another senior. DeMarco started his sophomore year varsity basketball. And injuries took him down for the last two years, but he kept fighting and fighting. And it didn't work out for him. I feel bad for him, but he's a good kid. Never had no trouble. He's going to be all right in his life. Good job, DeMarco. Last but not least, Quiar Quintero. Quintero Edwards. He's been great for us. Uh, he hit big shots. He was a senior leader on the court. And I appreciate that, uh, Quintero. And I'm really, truly going to miss that senior group. You guys are a great group, man. It was great working with you guys, man. So good job, fellas. Yes, and Tyrese Johnson also is a senior. He's not here. He had to work. But, uh, that senior group is good. He's, he's, comes along with them, all right? Good job.
Good evening. This is fantastic having the team here, isn't it? Let's give them a whole round of applause. I could not wait to have these guys up here because after the games are over, and yes, I missed a few hours of work to go to the game, but that was okay. I wanted to have them come because Manuel is in the south side of Peoria. And for these young men to stay above the fray and do what they do every single day so that they can be on the team is worthy of, 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 of being, is very commendable and worthy of note. And we need to recognize that these are the leaders of our city for the future. So thank you for that. But I will keep my comments short because I really want the principal to come up and, I said short, no pun intended. But I did want to extend this offer. There is a retiring council member who seems to think that we can take these guys on. I won't mention his name, Eric Turner, but you know, you guys might know him. You know, and I keep trying to tell this, this young man that he's a little long in the tooth. So maybe somebody out there could help him see the error of his ways. But I am so proud of these young men. I'm so proud of what they're doing at Manuel and what the principal is trying to, to accomplish with all the students at Manuel. It's not just about sports at Manuel. It's about academics. And about being proud of who you are and excelling in whatever you decide to do. And that is a, a very good opening to invite the principal up here to make some comments. Please help me welcome her.
First, sorry. First, I would like to thank the council for recognizing my boys. They represent who Manuel is. Our students at Manuel work hard. They work through a lot of adversity. They persevere and then they can see through, through that hard work that they can come out on top. And that is the goal that we have for all of our students. And so they set the tone for us, as do many other groups in our school. And I'm just very, very proud of them and proud of all of my kids. So I thank you very much once again, and keep doing what you're doing.
Thank you to each and every one of you for taking us on that journey. Because, you know, I don't know anybody who wasn't either in the Civic Center or who wasn't listening in some capacity to the game because you had the hearts and you still have the hearts of each and every Peoriaan. So thank you for taking us along that journey with you and best of luck in everything that you do. How about if we give this to the coach? Next up, we'll have the Summer Science Treasure Hunt. Here, Mike, we'll have you join up here as well. All right. Whereas, science education is an important aspect of the well-rounded education of every child. And whereas, American students lag behind those of every other developed country in comprehension of basic scientific principles. And whereas, the Peoria Academy of Science is an organization that has been promoting science education in central Illinois since 1930. And whereas, the Science Treasure Hunt for Children, an activity sponsored by the Peoria Academy of Science, is celebrating its 30th anniversary this summer. And whereas, over the past three decades, this popular event has served thousands of children in central Illinois, causing them to become excited about science and technology by visiting various science sites. Now therefore I, Jim Artis, Mayor of the City of Peoria, Illinois, do hereby proclaim the summer of 2019 to be the Science Treasure Hunt Summer in Peoria, Illinois, dated this ninth day of April, 2019. Signed by the Mayor of Jim Artis. Jim?
I'd like to thank Mayor Artis and the council. A group of scientists back in 1930 decided to form the Peoria Academy of Science in order to perpetuate, uh, science, to keep it, keep it going. Eighty-nine years later, that's our main goal, is to educate people and try and give them, keep them interested in the sciences. One of our major projects is the Science Treasure Hunt. It's been, it's 30 years old this year. And mainly due to Mr. Rutgers' genius. But I'll let him describe it.
Well, I won't say much, but I would like to ask a rhetorical science, I guess, science history question. We started this program in 1989 at Lakeview Museum. It was the brainchild of Sheldon Shaffer, who was the Vice President of Science and, and the Planetarium. He somehow talked me into doing this. And I've headed it up every year since. So my question is, what else of a science nature happened in 1989? The World Wide Web got started. It was started in Europe under CERN, which is the European Science Organization primarily for nuclear science. But it was underway as an exchange, a medium of exchange for scientists, primarily high-level scientists. scientists, nuclear acceleration and radioactivity and all that. But a week, a year or two later, people were saying, "Hey, why can't we use this? Why can't the public use this?" Because there's no reason why the public can't use it. So, initially, in 1989, '90, there was no public use. But in '91, it was decided that this would be made available to the public. So, in 1992, that's when it really started. The public was made aware of it, and we, as the Peoria Academy of Science, at the time, you know, the, the Science Treasure Hunt said, "Hey, you know, let's introduce people to this." This is the kind of thing we try to do. So, we included this in the 1993 Science Treasure Hunt. And so, what we had to do is tell the students to go to their local library and access the Midwest Regional Network. And it was stated as, "You're un-ramped to the World Wide Web." At that time, they were beginning to use that term. So, that was when we got involved, you know, in trying to get people-- because at that time, people did not have a computer that could access it. They had a computer at home. It was for calculating and word processing. So, that's when the whole thing exploded. Anyway, just a little background there. And so, for 30 years, we've been doing this. We print 6,000 of each passports a year. It costs about 60 cents each, which is $3,600. It's cost $6,000 a year to put this program on, and we accept no tax money or public funds, it's all from private donations, and we hope to keep doing it for another some years. Thank you.[695.93][695.93](APPLAUSE).
Thank you for making science fun, and you don't mind if adults play along with us too, right? We can--
Yeah.
Yeah, we just can't turn it in, right? Thank you very much.
Thank you much.
Thank you. Next up, we have Crime Victims Rights Week. Whereas, in 1982, the President's Task Force on Victims of Crime envisioned a national commitment to the more equitable and supportive response to victims. National Crime Victims Rights Week celebrates its energy, perseverance, and commitment that launched the Victims' Rights Movement, inspired in progress and continues to advance the cause of justice for crime victims. And whereas, crime can leave a lasting impact on any person, regardless of age, national origin, race, creed, religion, gender, sexual orientation, immigration, or economic status. And whereas, with the unwavering support of their communities and victim service providers behind them, survivors will be empowered to face their grief, loss, fear, anger, and hope without the fear of judgment, and will also feel understood, heard, and respected. And whereas, engaging in a broader array of healthcare providers, community leaders, faith organizations, educators, and businesses can provide new links between victims and services that improve their safety, healing, and access to justice. And whereas, honoring the rights of victims while working to meet their needs rebuilds their trust in the criminal system and social, social services system. And whereas, National Crime Victims Week provides an opportunity to ensure that all victims of crime, especially those who are challenging to reach or serve, are offered culturally and linguistically accessible and appropriate services. And whereas, the Peoria Community Against Violence, PCAV, is dedicated to strengthening victims and survivors in the aftermath of crime, building resilience in our communities, and working for a better future for all of our victims and survivors. Now, therefore, I, Jim Artis, Mayor of the City of Peoria, Illinois, do hereby proclaim the week of April 7th through the 13th, 2019, as Crime Victims Rights Week in Peoria, Illinois, dated this ninth day of April, 2019. Signed by the Mayor of Jim Artis.[873.06][873.06](APPLAUSE). So, we've, we've got a couple of speakers tonight. Chris, just come up.
First of all, I'd just like to acknowledge, my name is Chris Duncan, and those who, who do not know, I'm President of Pure Community Against Violence. I have also our project manager, Tiffany Duncan, and we also have our treasurer, Mr. Bobby Ford. We would just like to, to thank the mayor and the council for giving this proclamation. But it's really not about us. This week is about the, the victims. And what we want to do is, the reason that we were honored to have this proclamation is, we're having this Thursday, we're having a, an event at the courthouse to honor our past and creating hope for the future. We're gonna have just a little fun activities in the foyer of the courthouse. We'll have some popcorn, and we'll have some informational pamphlets passed out. And then, down by the fountain, this will happen in between 11:30 and 12:15 this Thursday at the Peoria County Courthouse. We'll have some silhouettes representing those who have lost their lives in the last couple of years here in the city of Peoria. And then, we'll have a few minutes to have a couple of speakers there and have our minister to do a prayer for us. And then, on, on this Saturday, we have a very special event. It'll be our first public forum. We have this young lady from the county, Ms. Ami, Amy Chanel. She will be our guest speaker. Amy is a victim service coordinator for the Peoria County Sheriff's Office, but she's done a lot for victims, and she's also worked in several areas, the Peoria Police Department, the Illinois State Police, as long with the, the Sheriff's Department. So, she's gonna be our keynote speaker at the South Side Mission between 1:00 and 3:00 PM. We're gonna, again, be honoring victims by presenting Ms. Chanel to say, "What are the rights that's available to people who have been victims of crimes?" So, Amy will be there, and we're asking you also to come there.
Ms. Tiffany?
I really don't have too much more to say, other than to encourage our community to stand with us against violence. These events, as he said, are to highlight the victims. It's very important that we, as a community, show those who pursue violence as an answer to conflict, that there are a lot more of us who stand out and up against it. And so, coming together as a community, being a united front, showing others that we stand against crime and we won't tolerate in that, tolerate that in our community, is a message that we are looking forward to, to share throughout the rest of this year and moving forward. So, anyone who can attend, any Peoria citizen, we invite you to come out. And if you are listening and you're not from the local area, we all have the same thing in common, that we want safe communities. We want a community that strives, and part of that is being, is reducing violence. So, again, we just encourage the community to just come out and support and share the ultimate goal of having violence reduced in our community and offering a safe environment for everyone.[1085.77][1085.77](APPLAUSE).
Just to wrap it up very briefly, I wore this vest. The mayor was kind enough to invest into the first vest for the Pure Community Against Violence. But I wore this, we wear these vests whenever there's a, a crime scene, so in order that we can be identified by the police officers. They may not know us individually. So, we try to wear these vests when we're at a crime scene. We don't try to do the police job. We don't go inside of the yellow tape. We stay on the outside of the yellow tape, and we try to help with the victims' families, and we try to give them information to help get, get them through these difficult times that they might be going through. And so, I just wanted to show this. This was a, a, a gift from the mayor, and we want to thank him for giving this to all of our members. All of our members have these vests whenever we go to a crime scene, so we can be identified by the police and, and, and help make things better for the victims to know who we are as well. So, God bless and thank each and every one of you.[1157.51][1157.51](APPLAUSE).
Again, on Thursday, from 11:30 to 1:00, or Saturday, from 1:00 to 3:00 at the South Side Mission. Thursday is at the Peoria County Courthouse. Please come out, please support, and let our full community know that you're there for them. Next up, we have a dual proclamation for Grandparents Alienation Awareness Day and the Bubbles of Love Day. First up, we have, whereas, Parental Alienation Awareness Day was established to spread the simple message that children need and should be allowed to give and receive the love of both their parents and extended families. And whereas, behaviors such as speaking negatively about a parent too or in front of a child can destroy the bond between a loving parent and child. And whereas, with awareness comes education, understanding, and the power to stop the abuse of innocent children caught in between the people they love. And whereas, this year marks the 14th Annual Parental Alienation Awareness Day. The public is invited to show their support in spreading the simple message of love for all children by joining others around the world in blowing bubbles for 10 minutes on April 25th, 2019. Now, therefore, I, Jim Artis, Mayor of the City of Peoria, Illinois, do hereby proclaim April 25th, 2019, as Parental Alienation Awareness Day in Peoria, Illinois, dated this ninth day of April, 2019. Signed by the Mayor, Jim Artis.[1288.23][1288.23](APPLAUSE). And we have a second proclamation that reads, whereas, strong family relationships constitute the foundation of our community. And whereas, alienation describes any number of behaviors and attitudes on the part of one or both parents designed to interfere, damage, or destroy the relationship between a child and family member. And whereas, alienation behaviors are frequently present in high-conflict divorces, separations, asymmetrical custodial arrangements, as well as intact marriages, thus often creating mental and emotional anguish to children. And whereas, mental health professionals agree that the negative effects of alienation can follow a child into adulthood with tragic consequences. And whereas, Grandparent Alienation Awareness Day seeks to recognize both the rights of grandparents in addition to the effects of not being involved in the lives of their grandchildren. And whereas, Grandparent Alienation Awareness Day is also intended to increase the knowledge and understanding of this problem to help families, institutions, the legal and mental health communities, and leaders to better identify and combat such abusive behavior to children. Now, therefore, I, Jim Artis, Mayor of the City of Peoria, Illinois, do hereby proclaim June 14th, 2019, as Grandparent Alienation Awareness Day in Peoria, Illinois, dated this ninth day of April, 2019. Signed, Mayor Jim Artis.[1385.71][1385.71](APPLAUSE).
I've been an advocate and an activist for children and family rights for a very long time. My hands are kind of sore tonight because of the Manuel kids, clapping for them. It's really heartwarming to see such happy, productive young people and such positive role models in their lives. And not every child gets that, especially at home. I'd like to thank the Peoria City Council again, and Mayor Artis, for recognizing the fact that parental alienation does exist and that it is, in fact, child abuse.
Hi, my name is Brad Hyde. I'm owner of The Baby Shop on Knoxville Avenue, 1800 North Knoxville Avenue. And this Sunday, we are having the 8th Annual Bubbles of Love Event at the shop, and it's basically designed to bring awareness to parental alienation. For the last year, we've been bombarded with, on the media, about kids being separated by parents, from parents at the border. And I saw everybody's reaction in this town and all over the state, the outcry for these children, you know, thousands of miles away. So, I know the people of this, this city love children, and what we're trying to do is make aware that your neighbors and your cousins and your uncles and your friends and your coworkers all have children that have been ripped out of their lives and stolen from them, and nobody's speaking up for those kids, and we're fighting for kids thousands of miles away. And it breaks my heart that your neighbors and people close to you are having their kids ripped from them, and we're not standing up for it. So, I'm happy to be here, and I thank the council for doing this again. Thank you.[1491.26][1491.26](APPLAUSE).
Thank you for what each of you do for our children, unsung heroes. Thank you very, very much. Next up, we have a proclamation about Memorial Day. And I think we've got a group who's gonna be joining us up here, as well as Councilman Turner.
Whereas, Memorial Day, originally called Decoration Day, is the day of remembrance of those who died while serving our nation. Memorial Day was officially proclaimed on May 5th, 1868, by General John Logan, National Commander of the Grand Army of the Republic. And whereas, it was first observed on May 30th, 1868, when flowers were placed on the graves of Union and Confederate soldiers in Arlington National Cemetery. And whereas, after World War I, the holiday was changed from honoring just those who died fighting in the Civil War to honoring Americans who died fighting in any war. And whereas, since Congress passed the National Holiday Act of 1971, it is now celebrated in almost every state on the last Monday in May. And whereas, to remind Americans of the true meaning of Memorial Day, the National Moment of Remembrance Resolution was passed in December 2000, which asks that at 3:00 PM local time, all Americans voluntarily observe a moment of remembrance and respect, pausing from whatever they are doing for a moment of silence, or to listen to taps. And whereas, the public is invited to attend the Memorial Day Ceremony on Monday, May 27th, from 10:30 AM to noon at the Gateway Building. This will give us the opportunity to remember, reflect, and honor those who gave their all in the service of our country. Now, therefore, I, Jim Artis, Mayor of the City of Peoria, Illinois, do hereby acknowledge May 27th for our Memorial Day Celebration in Peoria, Illinois, dated this ninth day of April, 2019. Signed by the Mayor, Jim Artis.
Before we ask Bill Davies to come up and say a couple of words and invite our, our other speakers, I'm gonna ask that our community, put this on your calendar. There is no greater day that, and show of support that we can do than to come out for Memorial Day Service. It is at the standard for what we get to enjoy each and every day. And please take, in that long holiday weekend, time out to come down to this, to this ceremony or to one of the other ceremonies that is happening in, in our area. We are lucky that there are so many ceremonies that we can honor those who have given the ultimate, ultimate sacrifice. Please join us. Don't let that day go without putting this on your calendar. We teach our children what we, what we live, and this is an important lesson to make sure that each of our children is there to know about the honors and sacrifices that give us each and every day the ability to live how we do. With that, Bill Davies, would you like to come up here and say a couple of words?
Yes, thank you very much. Thank you, and thank you, council members. Memorial Day, I realize that a lot of the material that he had read, I didn't realize it. I'm also gonna be covering a portion of that. Memorial Day was created to honor the brave people who died while serving the US military. One of the very first known celebrations took place back in May 1st, 1865, right after the end of the Civil War. A few years later, George, or Union General, John A. Logan, declared there to be a date in remembrance of those who died in the Civil War. He chose May 30th, 1868, because it wasn't really any anniversary of any battle. Old people certainly continued-- While people certainly continued holding tributes for the fallen, Memorial Day was still unofficial for many years. Decades later, in 1950, US Congress agreed upon a resolution for the President to ask Americans to observe Memorial Day. Then in 1968, the Uniform Monday Holiday Act was passed, which declared Memorial Day occurred on the final Monday in May. And finally, in 1971, the anniversary officially became a federal holiday. Memorial Day occurs at one of the best and most beautiful times of the year, the end of spring and the beginning of summer. Of course, you should all enjoy the beginning of summer, the time outdoors with friends and families. But be sure to take a moment to remember those who fought for our freedom. They definitely deserve to be honored. At this time, I'd like to call upon our legionnaires that are here today, present, so that they can give their name, the branch of service they're involved with, and the theater that they were involved with. Al?
I'm sorry, I'm Al Burnett, was sergeant in Marine Corps in Vietnam.
Larry Frank, US Army, Vietnam.
Gary Hall, US Army, Vietnam.
Not going to forget our councilman. Who is also a member of the Legion.
Eric Turner, Vietnam, 1967-68.
Young lady, you're with the...
My name is Jerry Brisbane, and I'm with the Memorial Day Association Planning Committee.
I'm Bill Davies, US Army, during the Vietnam War, I was stationed in Germany.
I'm going to ask Councilman Turner, because you're not getting off that easy. I know you like to be a man of quite powerful words and less words, but I would like to have you take the microphone a little bit, because you and I have had a couple of conversations recently about how important this ceremony is. And I appreciate your time on leading this as well, but I would like for you to talk a little bit about this as well.
Thank you. I guess, since this is my last go-around on the council, I wanted to ask everyone that I possibly could ask, to take time to come to this event. You can't understand how important it is. I remember 20 years ago, when I started being the emcee at this event, we look out at the World War II veterans, and there was 200, 250 of them sitting out there, enjoying the music and enjoying the event. Today, you go to the event down there for Memorial Day, and there's probably 40 to 50 of those vets that are still alive today. And these people gave their heart and soul, so that you and I can live the way we live today. And that's why I'm proud to do what I do, to help serve with the vets, because they do a tremendous job, and they love this city, they love this country, and all they want to do is make it better for each and every one of us. So if you can, take a moment to come down to the riverfront, you'll enjoy the municipal band, you'll enjoy a beautiful event that's done like no other events being done, and then you'll get a chance to hear a speaker who's a Gold Star Mother, which means her son died in combat, and hear a great speaker. So, thank you very much, I'd like to see you there, and thank you.
Thank you again. Just a little side note, I do believe that Logan was a resident of Illinois, and it's another piece of wonderful Illinois history, that hopefully we're teaching our kids and making sure that all throughout the history of this country, Illinois has mattered and has done some great things. So, with that, Madam Clerk, we are at our first item, which is Motion to Approve Minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting held on March 26th, 2019, as printed.
Great. Seconded by Councilman Jensen. Any discussion? There being none, please cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
We're at, we have a township item, 19-102, is a request from the town officials to approve the March 2019 actual expenditures, and to approve the April 2019 anticipated expenditures for the town of the City of Peoria. There is a handout on your desk, and it's a white piece of paper with a yellow addition, so that is the change.
Councilman Graham?
Mr. Chairman, I would move for approval.
All right. Seconded by Councilman Seer. Any discussion on this item? There being none, please cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Madam Clerk, we would be at consent agenda.
This is the consent agenda, 19-103, is a communication from the city manager and the human resource director with a request to approve and authorize a settlement of Jacob and Andrea Faw's claim in the amount of $32,100. 19-104 is a request to approve contracts for the 2019 City of Peoria and Peoria County trustee vacant lot mowing program, and award the contracts in the total amount not to exceed $334,729 as follows. A is Walton Service, B is P-Town Car Club, C is Hulse Lawn Care, D is Lawn Order Academy, and E is Hearns Landscaping. 19-105 is a request to approve contracts for the 2019 facilities, boulevards, and rights-of-way mowing program, and award contracts in the total amount not to exceed $73,993 as follows. A is All-in-One Restoration, B is JIMAX, C is Walton Service, and D is Hearns Landscaping. 19-106 is a request to approve and accept the low bid and award a contract to Kryling Roofing for roof coating at Lester Bergston Public Works Facility, in the amount of $246,347. 19-107 is a request to approve the following. A is a contract with JIMAX for tree stump removal by size and tree, and brush trimming by hourly rates in an amount not to exceed $170,000. And B is to approve a contract with JIMAX for emergency tree and brush trimming by hourly rates in an amount not to exceed $30,000. 19-108 is a request to approve the low bid of Horowitz Concrete, in the amount of $338,793, and award a contract for the 2019 sidewalk participation program, with an additional authorization of $11,207, for a total contract award of $350,000. 19-109 is a request to approve contracts with Burnside Brothers and JIMAX Landscaping for the 2019 weed and litter contract. 19-110 is a request to approve a state MFT resolution, in the amount of $1.5 million for the North Moore Road Improvement Project from Allen Road to University Street. And 19-111 is an appointment by Mayor Artis to the Peoria-Pekin Urbanized Area Transportation Study Technical Committee with a request to concur of civil engineer two, Emily Ambroso. And that completes your consent agenda.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Any items to remove from the consent agenda tonight? Councilwoman Jensen?
Item 19-109.
Any other items to remove tonight? There being none, we will vote on the remaining items on the consent agenda. Please cast your vote. I'm sorry, you're right. Let me redo that, thank you very much. Do we have a motion to accept the consent agenda by Councilwoman Jensen? Seconded by Councilmember Rigenbach. Thank you for catching that one for me. So please cast your vote. Passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
19-109 is a request to approve contracts with Burnside Brothers and JIMAX for the weed and litter contract.
Councilwoman Jensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protom. I pulled this item, I do support both G-Max and Burnside Brothers, but I do have a question for the city manager. I'm curious as to why this action item doesn't have language saying that the total amount will not exceed what the budget amount is, similar to the way that all the other action items are worded, and the other contracts that we just approved. So I'm wondering why we don't have that language in this action item.
Well, I think, you know, that's a good question. I don't know, and I don't know if I can answer that. I think it's the varied nature of when we do weed and litter. If we're going to be getting to the point where we'll be up against that dollar amount, we're going to have to come back to you with a budget amendment in order to address that. So I think that's ultimately the reason why, is if we're going to be exceeding $400,000, we're going to have to come back to council and say, here's the reasons why.
Aren't you going to have to do that anyway, if that happens?
Yes, we would. I mean, and I think that's ultimately, you know, one of those things that we would have to do. If we know that we're going to exceed this $400,000 for, you know, any of the weed and litter work that we're doing under this budget line item, we'd have to come back to council.
Okay, so my understanding from reading the action item is that the budget for this is $400,000, correct?
Correct.
And it's not any different than the budget that we, the budgets in all the other items that we just approved for mowing vacant lots, mowing rights-of-way, doing tree and stump removal, all of those other ones have budgets, and those action items are included, the language not to exceed whatever the budgeted amount is.
Even in those other items, if we are to exceed them, we're going to have to come back to council to get your approval on any of those items, to go forward with any additional funds, to do any additional work.
So I guess I would be more comfortable, just given our budget, and to be financially prudent, to move to amend this action item to add the language not to exceed $400,000. So it's consistent with all the other contracts and action items that we just approved. And so it's there, so I make that motion.
All right. We've got a second from Councilmember Moore. Councilmember Rigenbach?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I'd certainly agree with the language, but corporation council, maybe you would be the one. Regardless of the language there or not, we can't spend more than what we have budgeted, right, without a two-thirds amendment?
Correct. As the manager indicated, it would require subsequent action by this council, and it would require a supermajority. But there is no legal obstacle to doing as Councilmember Jensen requests.
All right. So just so everybody's clear, we can't change that amount without a two-thirds vote of the council in the future. Thank you.
Call the question?
Jensen?
Then call the question on the motion to amend?
Did you have anything else? You're good?
No.
Okay. All right, so we've got a first and a second. Any other discussion? There being none, please cast your votes.
Motion to amend?
Yes. Motion to amend passes unanimously. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Your motion was to approve with that amendment, is that correct? Okay, thank you. We're at regular business, 19-112 is a communication from the city manager and community development director with a request from the Advisory Commission on Human Resources to approve the 2020 CDBG Public Service Application.
All right. Motion by Dennis, Councilman Seer, and a second by Councilman Euler. All right, any discussion? All right, Councilwoman Jensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protom. I just want to make a comment, I'm happy to see that we've added services for victims of domestic violence, dating violence, sexual assault, or stalking as one of the eight priorities. Those were not included during our last round, I think, the previous year, and I brought that up, and asked that the commission, the Human Resources Commission, consider adding that this year, so I'm glad to see that that's a priority now again. So thank you. And I'll be voting in favor of this. Thank you.
Councilwoman Moore?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protom. As the council liaison to this commission, I continue to be very impressed with the work that they do, the deliberation that they give to each of the applications that come before them, and the staff member, Catherine Murphy, who helps guide all of us through the process. Having said that, I just want to make sure that folks in the community understand that these, the applications for these items are open. And we didn't read through, so I will read through, so folks listening will know what categories are available for grants to be received. Those items are youth services, ages 13 to 19, childcare services, under 13, services for abused and neglected children, mental health services, services for victims of domestic violence, dating violence, sexual assault, or stalking, health services, substance abuse services, and employment training. Oftentimes, the barrier to getting applications in for this commission is the lack of understanding of how to apply. And once again, Catherine Murphy, is Catherine here tonight? There she is. Catherine Murphy is always available for anyone to call, to visit, to help walk through. She will hold your hand through this application process. She doesn't bite, she's a very nice lady. And so if you're out there and you are interested in making an application for a grant to this commission, please call Catherine Murphy. With that, I close.
All right. Any other comments? Any other comments? Any other discussion? There being none. We've had a motion to approve and a second. Please cast your votes. And that passes unanimously. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
We're at unfinished business. 18-231 is a request to approve the purchase of the cement hole property located at the foot of Spring Street.
Thank you. City Manager, do you want to bring us up to speed on this one?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The item we're asking this evening for another extension, we had submitted the appraisals on the River Trail and Riverplex properties to the Illinois Department of Natural Resources. They are reviewing those appraisals. They have not sent those on to the National Park Service yet, so at this point in time, we would just simply request that two-week deferral. As I said, the two appraisals we've sent for submission are the Riverplex and the River Trail, or the Rocky Glen Appraisals. Riverplex is what started all of this. When the Riverplex was constructed back in 1999, we took some land that was purchased as part of the Law and Water Conservation Grant Program and then released that so that we could build the Riverplex. And so we're trying to make this whole now at this point in time.
Okay. So do I have a motion to defer?
For two weeks, please.
Councilwoman Moore, and a second by Councilmember Rigenbach. Any discussion on the deferral? There being none, please cast your votes. The deferral passes unanimously. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
18-275 is a request to adopt an ordinance amending Chapter 13 of the Code of the City of Peoria pertaining to refuse containers.
Councilmember Monalongo?
Thank you, Mayor Protam. I'd like to have Director Black say a few words about this.
Thank you, Councilman. This item has been before council a couple of times, and we have made modifications to it. So the way it sits right now is that the screening materials that would be required for the screening of dumpsters cannot be chain link or wire. So that is the prohibited materials. Beyond that, the other item that is more specifically in here is the item related to the maintenance, because a lot of the issues that are out there are obviously just maintenance issues and not necessarily the materials that are there. So we make it very clear that any type of screening enclosure, whether it be of a wood material or of marble, still has to be maintained. And so with that, hopefully, the council is satisfied with what is before you.
I'd just like to make a motion to approve.
Okay. Got a motion to approve, seconded by Councilmember Moore. And discussion, Councilmember Grab?
Director Black, for my edification, which item did you enjoy working on more, this one or the sign ordinance? Thank you.
Thank you for that question. That might actually be a good trivia one, whenever we do a city trivia contest. We've got a motion and a second. There being no other discussion, please cast your votes. Thank you, and that passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
19-066 is a request to concur with the recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission and staff to adopt an ordinance amending special use ordinance 14254 as amended in a Class C2 large-scale commercial district for a shopping center to add an accessory solar facility for the properties located at 9,000 9025, 9106, 9118, 1020, excuse me, 9126, and 9128 North Lindberg Drive, 1021, 1101, 1116, and 1200 West Byrd Boulevard, 8903, and 8919 North Hale, and 9109 North Knoxville Avenue.
Thank you. Councilmember Seer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protam. Move to approve item 19-066.
Okay, and I've got a second from Councilmember Euler. Any discussion on this item? There being none, please cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
If there's no further unfinished business?
Any other unfinished business to come before the council tonight? Not seeing any? We would be at new business. Madam Clerk?
We would be at new business.
All right, any new business to come before the council tonight? Councilmember Jensen?
Thank you. I've got a couple items. The first, I, I don't know if this is, it's sort of new business and sort of old business. Just asking what the plans are with regards to having public budget meetings prior to starting the discussions and hoping that that's going to start here towards the end of the month or beginning of next month.
Thank you. So we've, we met as staff today and had an internal meeting where we were talking about kind of the budget calendar going forward for the year. I anticipate that we'll have that fleshed out in the next couple of weeks, and then we'll be able to report back on when we can start with not only the public meetings and the public input, but give you a calendar of what we'll be looking at for the rest of the year.
Okay. That's great. As a follow-up, I just want to make sure that we have enough lead time to get it communicated out there, so, and figure out if we're going to have an additional communications plan since we haven't had super high attendance the last couple of years at those?
Correct. We haven't, and I think that's one of the issues that we need to really rethink, what's that best approach to try and reach the public. And so that's something that we'll, that we have been discussing as staff and will continue to discuss, and we'll report that back to you here soon.
As a follow-up, when we do social media publicity, is it mainly just on Facebook, or do we also do?
It's Facebook, Instagram, and Twitter as well. I think we all have all three of those media that we're utilizing.
Also, have we explored doing Snapchat?
We have, I think we've discussed it, but we haven't, we haven't jumped into the water yet.
It's not something that I'm great with either, but I know that the younger, younger people tend to use that more than I guess the others, so as long as, just keep us in the loop and let us know so we can get it out there, so we can get, encourage people to attend those meetings and get a lot of input, so we have a better budget discussion this year?
We absolutely will.
Okay. Thank you. Other item, sorry. The other item, a couple different citizens have approached me in the last couple of weeks about, it's my understanding that under the new contract with PDC, I think they're going to be removing the cement garbage cans that are out in the public. Is that accurate?
We are, we are replacing our neighborhood cans. We have new neighborhood cans on order that will be able to be picked up by PDC. We should have them. I think the lead time was about eight weeks from the time we ordered them, so they will be replaced probably in the summer.
Okay. As a follow-up, then my question is, do you know what's going to happen to the older garbage cans? Because some citizen groups and different citizens have asked if those could be donated to them to use as garden planters in some of the urban farms around the city?
Let me have a discussion with staff, and we can give you a report back on that.
Okay.
But we'll look into it.
And do you know how many there are?
I don't know offhand, and I don't want to say without having that number. I'm sure that I can get that from Public Works, and we'll be able to give that, get that to you and a report back.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protam. Mr. City Manager, some time ago, we had looked into what the cost would be to utilize our public access channel as a means to provide communication to the community. I believe at that time, we determined that there was not going to be a large cost to that at all, and somehow that issue fell off the cliff. I would like to revisit that issue, to bring it back in talking about these community meetings that may come up regarding the budget and other things that happen within our city, conveying information to our citizens. I think if we were able to utilize that public access channel better, we would be able to communicate to the folks in our surrounding areas much better. One of the things we get kicked for all the time is that we don't communicate well, and that's been something that I've been trying to remedy since I've been on council, and I'm not having a whole lot of success globally. In my district, there's a little more communication, but I think we could, we could do better. And we can revive that issue, bring to the council what it would cost to communicate to our citizens, and I'm sure that if the cost, if my memory serves me is correct, it wasn't a whole lot of funding, whether it was the opportunity to get someone, we didn't necessarily have a person who could do that. There are a lot of other communities around the state, much smaller than Peoria, that do that right now, because it's a passive system. You put it out there, it's like a billboard, you put it up there, someone's typing anymore at a computer, just like we may not be familiar so much with Snapchat, someone sitting at a computer literally and typing it in, as some of our illustrious columnists do sitting here, and it could be displayed on the channel. That's, that's not really difficult. We could bring someone from Manuel High School in to do that for that matter. So if you could look into what it would take, what type of skills a person would need to have to do that, and I'm sure that we could get that done in short order and be able to communicate to our citizens a lot better. Thank you.
Councilmember Grab?
Mr. Manager, compared to last year at roughly this time, how has our sales tax collection been performing?
Well, we only have the sales tax numbers through the end of the calendar year, I mean, because there's a 90-day lag in terms of receiving that. The numbers had been strong during the third quarter of 2018. The fourth quarter, they tended to moderate a little bit. So we overall, though, we ended with our sales tax numbers being higher than we had budgeted, which was good, but, but, you know, we don't know yet how this first quarter has come. I think that at the next council meeting, the finance director will have a first-quarter financial report that we'll be able to kind of walk through what we know as of today.
Thank you, Manager.
Any other new business to come forward tonight? There being none. Madam Clerk?
We're at citizens' opportunity to address the city council.
Welcome any citizens to come, and just as a reminder, we do ask that you keep your comments to five minutes. We will have a timer up here that will give semblance of where we are on there as the countdown comes up. And if you will come forward and mention your name and address for the record. First up, we have Ron Valley. Ron, thank you for being here tonight.
If I can make a recommendation to the city council, please have two meetings in one night. It seemed to go much faster. It's an honor always to stand before you and to speak with you about some of the things that are going on in our community that we have a great insight on. My name is Ron Valley. I'm director of Helping Hand Resource Center located in Peoria, Illinois, and I'm also proud to announce tonight that I'm also owner of Central Illinois Oning, which is a oning company, manufacturing company here in Peoria, Illinois. So my, first off, I'm going to try to squeeze this all in in five minutes. Give me a break. So I want to give you a little description of what we are doing here at Peoria Oning, Central Illinois Oning, excuse me. Central Illinois Oning will, is located currently up in the Pioneer Warehouse area, but we have decided to move effective today. Our new location is 2706 Southwest Washington Street in the Warehouse District in the South End. We currently employ 12 individuals who manufacture customized onings, and we will be adding over the course of the next 18 months, 24 additional employees to our production line. We will be producing onings within an 80-mile radius, and sometimes we go down as far as St. Louis, Missouri. I come to you today because these accomplishments that we have made as proud owners, John Wright is also the proud owner of Central Illinois Oning, we come to you today because we want to acknowledge the accomplishments that have been forthrighted for our South End citizens. It's been five years, 2014, 2019, that I stood before this council and tried and attempted to, maybe sometimes in a hostile way, but lately in the last two years, it's been in a subtle way. That reentry is a huge issue in our community. Today, I'm proud to announce that Helping Hand Resource Center has employed over 286 individuals who were released from prison within the last five years in a full-time, livable wage, salary job. Our turnover rate currently at this time is only 21% compared to the national average, which I'm pretty sure you're well aware of, is much higher. Our recidivism rate currently is at 13.7%. Nationally, it's 62%. That means over seven people out of 10 are going back to prison. Our clients, only 1.3 out of 10 are going back to prison. It goes to show that there is proof in the pudding that if we crunch up and we work on providing a reentry program in our community that is sustainable, that instead of having more violence, we can reduce crime, instead of having more cost effectiveness due to violence or due to crime, we can turn things around. We have 200 and some people paying taxes to this community rather than taking taxes away. Every one of the 20-some people that we intend to hire at Central Illinois Oning will be hired from the South End, but the burden on you as a city council is to provide them the training that we need, because we need welders, we need industrial sawers, we need installers, and these wages don't start at $10 an hour. A welder makes $25 an hour, a sawer makes $25 an hour, and an installer starts at $15 an hour. But these are jobs that can be given to individuals, and we need your help to train them. We came to the South End, we're bringing our company to the South End for one purpose and one purpose only. We have talented individuals living in the South End. We have individuals who want a job. We have individuals who are having trouble with transportation to get up to the Pioneer Parkway. We have individuals who are having a horrible time getting into a job because of transportation issues in the South End, and of course, because of poverty. It's up to you as a council to bring a righteous training program to the South End. It's up to you. We need your help. And I firmly believe that if you look at the stats and you look at the demographics in that area, you will see too, that a training program is needed badly in that area. Thank you very much, I appreciate your time.
Next up, we have Paige Street Matter.
Good evening. My name is Paige Street Matter, Peoria, Illinois. I will be addressing the taxpayers of Peoria tonight. Less than a month ago, I peered before this body and gave a citizen's perspective of the state of the city. You will recall that this version is in stark contrast to the farcical state of the city Mayor Artis provided. I likened his version to a tale more akin to that of a make-believe place that I called Never Neverland, a land which is not Realville, but a land where make-believe and false realities rule and reality is not the normal state of affairs. Unfortunately, since then, we have not made positive strides in this city. This body recently proposed and approved a salary increase to the city manager with the following results, results that are real in this city. The city is the fifth worst city in the United States for African-Americans to reside, although- although that was an improvement from being ranked second the prior year. I mentioned last time examples of poor money management exhibited by the city, led by the city manager apparently worthy of a pay raise. To bail out the city for the ever-growing pension obligations, the city looks to the property owners for a per-property fee of at least $50. On top of the ever-increasing real estate taxes, this additional fee of $50 will be imposed. Does anyone really believe the fee will remain at that level? Come on, get real, I don't. Again, my belief is based in Realville, not in the mayor's make-believe Never Never Land. My belief is founded in the experience of Peoria landlords. With what started out as a $25 annual fee has now blossomed into the cash cow to be milked at the rate as high as $250 per property if you're not a perfect landlord. The fee has increased tenfold. Of course, I mean, what value does this rental registration program bring to the taxpayers of the city? Of course, value rather than simply bringing in dollars for the city. I mentioned last time that the city taxpayers had to cover a $2 million liability that was incurred in trying to figure out whether the city should purchase the water company. Based upon a couple of incidents I will mention shortly, there is no way the city is capable of running a utility company, but yet we pay to study whether we can. Again, there's a $7 million error with the Pier Marquette project, a loan which professional bankers would not even make, not to mention, in Realville, there's a new lawsuit on this. Now, we are outpaying a tax because in Realville, it does in fact rain, so because it rains in Realville, we pay a tax. I also spoke about other ridiculous costs to city taxpayers. I mentioned the alleged misconduct of the former police chief for the city and the costs that investigation incurred. And how can we ever forget the alleged hanky-panky that was taking place in a city car, meaning a taxpayer-purchased car, clearly labeled as a city car on a leisurely drive to Stark County between two city employees? Neither of them appeared to be wearing seat belts, the armrest appears to be up, and the passenger's head seems to be down. I think, if I remember right, the female employee was looking for a cellphone. I wonder if this will make it to Comedy Central like Mayor Artis's Twitter gate did. I hoped I would not have new material to discuss before you. Unfortunately, I do, so I am here. We have city supervisors receiving bonuses and pay increases while on work probation for alleged hanky-panky. That can only work in a Never Never Land. We have the alleged hanky-panky community development supervisor still not knowing where the city limits end. On the west side of the city, we had the same supervisor authorize a contract for $5,000 for property cleanup work to be done. That property was cleaned up and accepted a contract by the city's favored contractor, JIMAX. And the property was cleaned up, but get this, the property was not in the city of Peoria. It is located in West Peoria. How are we going to recoup that $5,000? How much was the city manager's raise? Finally, we have only recently learned that the city has hired a life coach for Ross Black, the community development director, at a cost to the city taxpayers of $150 per hour. What does a life coach do? How about people do their job, do what they are required to do? If they do not do those things, maybe they should move to a different job and let someone else play on the team and make the right plays. Stop milking and start appreciating Peoria taxpayers. Now get real and start doing your job. Thank you.
Next up, we have Sarah Martin.
My name is Sarah Martin, and I am here tonight in support of every family that is represented here tonight and of the families who couldn't be here. As some of you learned this election, we will hold you accountable. We will do, we do expect you to do your jobs and fight for the community and all the missing people, not just people of your same color or religion, or for your nephews when they get in trouble, but for all of us. We expect you to hold Peoria Police accountable, and we expect for them to do their jobs. We expect for the new members coming in to hear us and understand that just one missing is too many, but right now, we have way more than one missing. Mark Bohannon has been missing around two years. Alexis Scott has been missing going on two years. Janie Sellers has been gone for about a year and a half. Kayla Fanning called the police for help and then was murdered. Now, I know for a fact that many tips have been given on Alexis Scott that were not handled correctly by police. You all have also been informed about this many times before now, but have any of you tried to do anything to help us hold them accountable? There's a child missing now also, 16-years-old, Malaysia Edwards, known as Laisha, she's 16. She could be any of our kids, and what have the police done? I'll tell you what they've done. They had her phone for two weeks before ever getting her mom's permission to go into her phone. Why? Why are these missing people not important? Any of these people could be your child, brother, sister, father, mother. Would you have a problem with it then? Would you speak up then? Would you show up to searches or help hand out flyers then? There's only two of you that I've ever seen show up to a search, and that is you and you. And I appreciate you coming, but we do expect you to come back. We need your help. As representatives of our city, we deserve and demand your help. You all should be speaking out about the problems in the city and not trying to sweep them under the rug. All of these missing people have families who love them and want them home. They mean more to them than the lifestyle that they may have lived, drugs, alcohol, streetlight, whatever, shouldn't make a difference. What's important is they need to come home, and we need to make sure no more go missing. The truth is, people know they can come to Peoria and literally get away with murder because look at how many are unsolved. And pretty soon, they will look at it like they can get away with taking people also. Now, as far as Alexis goes, we have a get-together planned for this Friday, April 12th, at the Nine at 633 Main Street, because April Scott, Alexis's mother, will be on the Steve Waco Show. We would appreciate seeing all of you there. There will also be a search on April 17th. We meet at 10:00 a.m. at the Old Kroger's, and when we're searching for one, we're searching for all. It would be great to see you. Otherwise, our only chance is to go back to the ballot box again, and I think that we showed this time that we need help. Thank you.
Next up, we have William Jones.
Bill Jones, Peoria. Most of yous know me. I come tonight on behalf of the Alexis Scott campaign. And earlier, we did a little march. I don't know if some of you have seen that outside here, doing some chants and trying to bring awareness to this case. As you know, this is going on about a year and a half now, actually a little over that. Bear with me, my throat's a little sore from surgery a few days ago, so. As a young girl here has got the signs, somebody's got to be held accountable. And coming here tonight, speaking to some of the other people here, I've noticed that there's people I didn't even know about that's missing, young girls, 16-years-old, whether they're runaways, I don't know, but they're missing. A mother's looking for a child. And if you've got a kid or a grandchild, whether it be a daughter or a son that's missing, you'd want somebody looking for them. And I don't know where you're at on a chief on any of them cases there. I know that they've really messed up on Alexis's case, whether you'd want to admit that or not, I'll tell you. April wouldn't even come here tonight, April Allen. She's disgusted with it, you know? And it's going almost on two years per case. Now, I know they need evidence, and they need this and they need that, but they've had some evidence that's been laying around, you know, saying a lab's three years behind or whatever it is, that's possible, I could take that. But there's a lot of things that are inconsistent in this case that are just unbelievable. And somebody's got to be held accountable on it, and not just that case, but mainly hers. The young lady here behind me, sitting here, Mark Bohannon's daughter, I believe, they've been working on that case for, going on two years this month, I believe. When I go out and search, I search for anybody, and, you know, I was out on a search just two weeks ago. I'm not going to disclose where that's at. Going on just leads and things that I've gotten on information, and I'm not even in law. I haven't studied law, I've been around it most of my life. I mean, what does it take to get a search group or cadaver dogs or anything in this city? And I've been in many a cities, and they've told me this, they have never heard of police officers or city police department ever not going out into the woods and looking. I've never seen that yet, chief, in Peoria. As you know, I've never seen none of the police officers or the detectives going in and doing the fieldwork in the woods looking, doing a search. Now, they may tell you they have, but I've done over 200, and I can tell you that not once have they ever done that. I've told them that before. Some of them are good guys, I think they're trying to do, you know, their best, but sometimes their best ain't good enough, and if they can't do the job, give it to somebody that can. Thank you.
Next up, we have Rachel O'Reilly.
Rachel O'Reilly, thank you for letting me speak. I'm also here on behalf of everybody that has somebody missing, Alexis Camry Scott. Please come to the search next Wednesday if you can. If you can't, please donate. It is really, really unfortunate that the citizens are having to raise money to find missing persons. As far as LaShayla, a 16-year-old is unable to consent legally speaking, so why aren't you going to get her? We hope that this 16-year-old that's missing is not a victim like Alexis could possibly be of sex trafficking. What they do is to try and get a young person to run away is the goal. You know, they want control, they use coercion, they use manipulation. There's also another 14-year-old girl that's missing that's pregnant, and we hope that that's also not another victim of sex trafficking, or hopefully, they are not trying to manipulate her into doing things that she may not be comfortable with. Yeah, please do everything you can. Please put your actions where your mouth is. Thank you.
Next up, we have Darcy Cady.
Good evening, city councilmembers. Darcy Cady of Peoria. I came here tonight along with several others, just to revisit the fact that Alexis Scott is missing, Mark Bohannon is missing, Malaysia Edwards is missing, Janie Sellers, also known as Janie York, is missing. There's believed to be another 14-year-old, her name, I don't believe, has been disclosed at this time, missing, as was previously mentioned by Rachel O'Reilly. I hope that we can consider creating maybe an independent liaison position in cooperation with organizations such as the Center for Prevention of Abuse and/or various shelters. This has been done in Ohio, they have the highest sex trafficking rates throughout the United States, and they've started creating these independent liaison positions to help these families understand their legal rights of what they can pursue, but also helping hold police officers and detectives accountable. And unfortunately, that's been an ongoing issue within Peoria, is that the families are nervous wreck, they feel like they're doing as much as they can, and yet oftentimes, the information they receive back isn't always accurate, or it's coming from multiple sources, so the right foot doesn't know what the left foot's doing. And that's not necessarily an organization's fault, however, if you get too many cooks in the kitchen, nobody knows what they're doing. So I think having a cohesive, independent approach with a third party overseeing what's happening may be the way to go in the future, because from my understanding, I believe the term is civil suits are piling up. I know that there's at least one family doing that, there's potentially a second one planning to pursue that. I know the city of Peoria doesn't have money to just throw around fighting these cases, but yet that's what's going to keep happening if we don't have correct procedures in order to help solve these cases and/or to do it correctly, even if they're never solved, because that's the reality of what we're dealing with. So I really hope moving forward, maybe that's something that will be on the table to be considered. I feel like it's a great preventative measure for PPD to move forward and maybe even allow them to be more successful. I feel like they have a genuinely great goal with what they want to move forward with in helping these families, but we also have to help them achieve that. And if we underfund PPD and underfund fire departments, we're not allowing them to do their greatest potential. So please consider doing that. Look at what Ohio State is doing. It's really amazing work, they've got a massive outbreak of sex trafficking issues on their hand, but I really think they're trying to do great things. So for the listening public, please keep in mind Alexis Camry Scott has been missing going on two years, Mark Bohannon missing going on two years, Malaysia Edwards, very recent, I'd say within the last month, Janie Sellers, also known as Janie York, within the last year and a half, as well as a young 14-year-old missing within the last month. Thank you all so much for your time.
We do not have an executive session, so we would be at adjournment.
Okay. I got a motion by Councilmember Seer, a second by Councilmember Euler. Please cast your ballots. Passed unanimously. Thank you, and for all those in our listening audience, have a great night.